And first on our list in our council reports today is Simon Kenton High School. President is Principal Martha Siders. And John Puff, welcome. Glad to have you today. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. We are very proud of our progress in the past year, and so I want to talk to you just for a few minutes about that. The first thing you'll see is that our ACT increased from a 19.8 to a 19.9, which at first glance you may think, well, that's not a huge jump. Why are you so excited about that? But if you continue on to look at the data, you'll see that the reason we are so excited is because we went from a 41% college and career-ready rate to 53.1% of our students being college and career-ready. So even though the overall score did not increase significantly, the number of students that did meet the benchmark and were college and career-ready did significantly increase. So we are very, very proud of that and happy for our students because we know that when they have met the benchmark, they won't have to take remedial classes when they get to college. So we're very pleased with that. Our overall score in the accountability system went from a 56.1 to a 63.2, which is proficient. It's the first time in this new system that we've been rated as proficient, and we are progressing. And then, very exciting, our percentile went from 60 to 87. So we do have a lot to celebrate this year. However, we also know that it's a lot of responsibility not to just sustain it, but to build on all the things we know that went well. So what are the things we thought went well and contributed to our success last year? 68% of our students made typical growth in math and reading. And we did have several intervention classes that we started last year and in previous years, but added to them. We have a Read 180 for freshmen that are below benchmark level. That's two classes for them. We have a Read 360, and we just made that name up, but it's an intervention class for juniors and seniors who did not meet the benchmark in the ninth or 10th grade. And then, Alex is an acronym for a math program for students that did not meet benchmark in the ninth and 10th grade. So we have several intervention classes for them. Also during the school day, we have a 25-minute period where students can receive tutoring for free in basically any subject, but the main ones are science, English, math, social studies, and business. We have a group of teachers available in designated areas for them to go receive tutoring. If they need tutoring from their teacher, and they're not one of the group tutors, they can get a pass and go see their specific teacher during the school day if they need to. In addition, we think this is going to help us. This will be our second year of Foundations of Math Design. That's an intervention math class for freshmen coming in that are not at grade level, hopefully to get them at grade level so that they won't need the Alex intervention class by the time they get to be juniors. One other thing that we do think contributed to more of our students meeting benchmark was the interventions that we did. After that, we retested them as seniors on the Compass for English and Coyote for math. And if they were able to meet the benchmark on the second round as a senior, that did count for college and career readiness. And we do plan to do that again. So how did some of our scores turn out? 60.8% of the students were proficient or distinguished in reading, 57.7% in social studies, and 33.5% in math. You can see, we do have a long way to go with math students and having them reach proficiency. We did, last year, have professional learning communities that work together to align the curriculum, look at student work, and develop instructional strategies. Those were more in a large group, say, the math department or the English department. We have refined that this year. And they are meeting in just, say, Algebra II, or geometry, or English II, or English III, and narrowing their focus with specific data that they are looking at. We're also trying to provide enrichment for students that have already met benchmark and need to be challenged. The enrichment happens every day in AP classes. They get extra time on a rotating basis in calculus, statistics, US history, European history, world history, chemistry, biology, English, and AP world language. And then, we also felt like our teachers could use some more support and training, and they are involved in the literacy design and math design from the GATES training, and they are getting professional development and learning to implement and analyze their data and projects from those. So that was a lot that we felt like contributed last year. So how to build on that and maximize our capacity is what we're really working on this year. As I mentioned before, we've differentiated the professional learning communities. They're meeting in smaller groups, and an administrator meets with them each time to kind of guide the work and make sure we are informed and can provide the support that we might need to. Before the plan test, the plan test has already happened, there were many numerous practices in the core areas, and the teachers did work together to analyze the results and then go back and reteach. So that has already happened. Currently, the junior teachers in the core areas are working on the ACT. So they will quarterly do practice tests, they'll score them, they'll have a baseline, they'll give the students feedback, and then the teachers will meet together to see collectively as a group if there's any skills that are deficient, and then devise a plan to reteach because sometimes different teaching methods, if they share them, particularly if one class got the skill and the other didn't, and they share how they taught it, then that just builds for them how they can go back and reteach. We have had our department data analysis. Each department spent a half a day analyzing the data from this past year and developing an improvement plan. And the improvement plan had to be all the way from the individual teacher to the department to the school. So we kind of built as you went so that each person had something they knew they needed to be working on to contribute to the overall scores. And then, the math and English teachers are still involved in the literacy and math GATES training. And we do have two teachers that are going to the national trainings and coming back and sharing that on the national level. So we're really pleased with that because they have been bringing back quality information and sharing it. Okay. So for the looking at achievement gap, growth, college and career readiness, and the graduation rate, all of these measures together definitely worked, I guess you would say, in our favor because it's not just one data point. Now, it is several things collectively that can make a difference. So what new strategies are we going to implement this year? Each year, we have felt like we've gotten a little bit better and had a better understanding of how to prepare the students for the ACT, but we know we are not there yet. We still have a long way to go because each teacher's understanding of how to build the skills based on the standard is different. So it's getting that, all of that together, the teachers prepared and a good understanding, and then being able to reteach based on the skills. So we have worked more on that over the summer. We're continuing to work on that. We just did purchase some additional resources currently for teaching grammar in the context. That seems to be an area where you can't separate just the skill and drill from the context of the test. So our teachers felt like they needed some more resources, so we were able to get those for them. And then, they are currently working on the skills, if not daily, weekly, to help build those scores and skills. The sophomore teachers had completed the process for the plan, but now they are continuing, but they switched from the plan to the ACT. So they are continuing to build on those skills also. Same thing for the freshmen. Each department had to complete a department improvement plan. And again, it is by teacher, by subject, by department, and then by the school. We will be giving more certification tests this year to see if students are career-ready. We had two, two years ago, 10 last year, and we're hoping to double that this year for students to be career-ready by taking the certification tests. And then, we will again be giving the Compass and Coyote to the seniors, and they will be receiving remediation during score. They're already getting it in their classes. If they did not meet benchmark in math as a junior, they have to take a remedial math class, math for college and career readiness as a senior, and that should help prepare them for the Coyote. So they're already in that. And if they still don't pass the Coyote in December, then we will put them in a score group second semester since they've already had the class, and then try to help them meet benchmark again. Any questions? I think I was down to five, right?
One note there. So in your career readiness, so what's our goal for this year? I mean, we went, you know, from 51 to 63, no, 53 to career college-ready. What do you think we'll get for this year? Do you have a goal?
For college and career ready?
Yeah.
Well, I would like to, yeah, we have a goal. We had it at 70%. I would like to see it even higher than that. But I would say realistically, perhaps 60% this year.
I think maybe 60.
Yeah. Realistically, and I, we're trying. We are trying.
Your graduation rate was 91.8, which was awesome.
Yes. Yeah. And I contribute that. We still have our monthly meetings at the district level for concentrating on dropout prevention and interventions, I guess you would say. And we are really trying hard at the school level to do everything we can to keep them engaged, keep them on track, intervene where we can, and then provide as many opportunities as we can to keep them from dropping out. It is unfortunate that some still do. Sometimes they just won't listen, but sometimes we can.
Karen, I can follow up on that. College and career readiness is such an important benchmark that everybody talks about nowadays. What's the big part of that beneath the surface? What's the big part of that for Simon Kenton that's keeping you from getting there? What's the biggest factor that's keeping you from getting where you'd like to be? I know it's not easy. I'm not saying you're not doing everything you can. What's the big factor that keeps Simon Kenton students from hitting the college career readiness goal that you'd like them to hit?
Well, I'll have to say that they simply, they don't have the skills. Or if they have the skill, when it comes to taking the test itself, the test itself, they can't demonstrate that they have the skill on that particular test. And it's pretty much, it's set up the way it is set up. So we have to meet them where they are, no matter what their skill level is, and just keep building on that. Some of it would be test-taking strategies and things like that, but not all. I would just say it straight up, we have to build the skill.
Thank you. Thank you. And give your best to the rest of your team.
I've got one question for you. As we move to the 18-age bracket now, do you think that will be detrimental or will be positive to a career-ready score? Since these students are now going to have to commit to meet career-ready, do you think that'll be, that'll help you get there, or it'll make it tougher to get there?
It will be a challenge. It will be a challenge mainly because, interestingly enough, just because a student drops out doesn't mean they don't have the skills or ability to demonstrate. A lot of times, they just don't want to. They're just not interested. So I think our biggest goal is, but there may be some who truly are so far behind, they just feel like they can't, will never catch up, and why bother? But then, there are others where they could do it if they wanted to. It's getting them to want to that will be our biggest challenge. Yeah. Yeah. That's a first step.
That works.
Yeah. That is a first step.
Well, thank you very much. Good to see you give our best to the rest of you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Scott High School. Dr. Bren Statt and Shane Rogers. You guys all right?
Doing really well.
Good. Good. We're ready to hear from you. Go ahead.
Well, thanks for having us today. We're very excited always to come talk to you guys, and I'll talk to a lot of you individually. Always enjoy that and happy to be here before you today. We're very proud of some of the few improvements we've made. The two main areas that we currently have the largest improvement in, and we're very proud of, is a couple of achievement areas and our growth in gap. If you remember, gap has been a significant area for us to look at and work on for quite a while. We are happy with some improvements in that area, but want to see some more. And the two areas that we grew the most, our social studies achievement actually gained 16.9 points last year, seven points above state average, massive amount of growth there. Also, our English achievement grew 10.2 points, a lot of growth there. Also, very happy to know that the things we're doing in those areas have made a big difference. We've had a couple of things that have happened there. Social studies specifically, if you were to see our social studies teachers work, and especially our department head, they have truly become a PLC community, almost functioning by themselves and pulling in their own resources. The rest of our school's actually been working with them some to even try to model that same kind of interaction between each other. And I'll bridge between the two because the two departments have really mirrored each other a lot of ways. We've had some turnover in both departments, and it has really caused those two departments to be close within themselves. English department, the same way. They have really tightened up sharing how they work with kids, sharing issues with classes, and really working with our consultants at central office and bringing on some new initiatives. The big change in social studies specifically is they spend a lot of time really manipulating text, really getting into primary and secondary resources, which is what our English teachers are doing now also. It's, you know, letting kids dive into text and being much more of a facilitator rather than just talking and trying to get them to listen to them all the time. But that's what we contribute to, most of that growth in those two areas. We also know that the Renaissance Academy has had an impact on those, although it's only been slight from their point of contact. Renaissance Academy, last year, was its second year, and the sophomores did take the EOC English II in the course assessment, which is reflected on that achievement. But they have not taken any other assessments from the state assessment yet. They are doing MAP, which some of those scores are later on here for you, and they just got done with plan, and their growth is way, way above national averages. So they're doing really well, and we're very excited about that. They're actually taking the US history and a course today. So just talked to them Friday about that, and they're actually pumped about it and very excited. So those kids in Renaissance that just got out last year, actually, they will be taking the ACT this year, which we're excited to see their scores. And a lot of them are actually taking college classes as juniors, several of them in AP classes, and we're really looking forward to seeing the kind of impact they have on our scores and our performance. There's some things we've implemented this year that we sincerely expect to have a big impact on our performance in the future. Couple of the biggest ones is last year, and we were talking about this when I did this report last year with you guys, that my site base decided along with the school that we were going to put in RTI classes for kids that were below benchmark in math and reading. So this year, for the first year ever at Scott High School, if you are below benchmark as a freshman sophomore in reading and/or math, you get an extra 72 hours of instructional time with one of those teachers embedded in the regular class. And the way that works for us is we're on trimesters, so you can get a credit and a half in a full year. So if you're performing above benchmark, you can choose to only take English for two of those trimesters. But if you're below benchmark, you take all three. So that's where the extra 72 hours comes in. And we're doing that at freshman sophomore level currently. We will look in the near future to see if we should continue that for juniors and seniors. We just wanted to start at the freshman sophomore level to try to get those kids earlier and sooner. Also this year, after central office came out and audited our school, so we actually spent a lot of time at the end of the school last year looking at the audit, all of the data we could find, including our assessment data and Youth Truth data, which is a student boys survey that we did. And me, the teachers, and department heads, we worked on a set of universal standards, things we think at our school and things my teachers think at our school that you should be doing in every classroom every day. And our work this year in our PLCs and department meetings have been structured around that. We're actually looking at using that within the SITS program as well to structure some of our lesson plan around that as well. And I know those details are in there. If you want to look at some of those, you can. But it's things that have been shown as best practice, like student-to-student activity today, every day, learning targets every day, some type of formative assessment every day. We're not at 100% on that yet, but we're getting there. We're seeing improvements on it, and our teachers are talking about it. And when we walk, when consultants walk in our rooms, that's the main point of their We also, last year, really spent a lot of time on course prerequisites and putting kids where they need to be. We used MAP scores and plan scores and almost every piece of data we could find to put kids in a class at the level that they can be successful at. So we talked about being on benchmark, you get three trimesters of English or two. That was decided on MAP. And we do that for our math classes as well. We also do that for math classes at the senior level, deciding on, you know, if they need more. And some kids, we, you know, we try to talk them into taking more. Some kids are required to take more. So if they don't do well, and we have several plans on that. We also put in an advisor/advisee program this year. You might notice later on in the report that I've sent to you, one program review that's kind of struggling is our practical living vocational studies. A lot of the advisor/advisee program has functioned around that. There's a lot of school-wide movements you need to make, and you're supposed to deal with kids on. It's also came from our kids and our teachers saying that we needed to try to find a way to communicate to kids about what they need to communicate about. It has a lot of social functions in it. For example, we are making juniors and sophomores actually fill out college applications during that time. We're having seniors actually like look at credit card statements. All those things that we used to try to do within the class, we're putting them in a place where they're with an advisor. Every teacher has a group of kids, and they will actually stay with their group of kids. So if they have freshmen, they'll stay with those freshmen for four years, help them do some planning. We're also helping on, or hoping to use the ILP in that time. ILP hasn't been used as well as we'd hoped, so we're going to try to make use of that as well. As we got our data back, there was really not any surprises from it. We were happy to meet AMO. We improved enough to meet our AMO. So we improved about 1.6 points last year, went up a few percentage points according to the state. But we're not really happy with where that's at. If you were to talk to us, we almost feel like a rabbit that's wound up and ready to jump. We really do feel like we've got a lot of things in place that are going to push us quickly now. Several things I've talked to you about, some other things. But as we looked at our data, we also noticed that we're not doing much, or we weren't doing much with our juniors and seniors. We really felt like we had a large gap there, and that's where a lot of the assessment scores come from. So immediately, we got to work really fast. Department heads, myself, we've had multiple meetings, have also been working with some consultants in central office, and we have launched a massive attack, is the best thing I can say, on our juniors and seniors. From a couple of standpoints, we're not happy with the number of kids that are career and college-ready. We didn't even feel like, when we talked to our kids, that they knew what that meant. So we attacked that very closely, very tight. We have plans in each department how they're attacking that. Specifically in English and math, my site base decided to increase allocation for teachers in English and math so that we actually have, for second and third trimester, an English teacher that will work half a day with targeted students that are close to benchmark to get them help and move them toward that benchmark so that they can be ready for college. Same thing in the math. And they will do that second trimester and third trimester. We also had each department look at their, at student schedules very closely and their own, and we've put some classes together that we thought could handle it so that some more teachers could be freed up to work and target with students individually. Since we've done that, we have kids talking about their CCR status. We're actually planning a celebration where our culinary students are going to prepare a meal and a celebration for our kids that are already there. And as that happens, we're going to do some more celebrations with the ones who make it. It is becoming normal, average, daily talk with kids that you say, you know, hey, how close are you to be in college-ready? We almost were afraid at one point that we would talk to them too much about it, and they would get sick of it. But yesterday, I actually talked to a teacher that explained to me that, when she mentioned it to the kid, the kid said, oh, I've done that twice. And she said, oh, so you don't want to do it again? That's okay. And he said, no, 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 please, let's look at it again. I just want to, you know, make sure I'm looking at what's right. So it's really cool that they're starting to feel it and see it. One of my counselors actually works a lot with my teachers on that career and college readiness, and we meet every Monday as administrative team and look at a couple of things. And one of the things we look at during that time is what is our CCR status right at this second? How many kids have we moved? When are we moving them again? What are the plans we have moved? Coyote and Compass will be a big part of that. English Coyote started this year. We're sending several teachers to that to be trained also so we can give the English Coyote to our students and get them qualified in that area as well. Let's see, we'll go here a little farther. Our gap students we talked about, we really are still worried about our gap students. We saw some growth there, but not like what we wanted. We actually, last night, you approved a grant for us to apply for at the state level. We sent that in today, actually. And then, we got an email back within a couple hours from them that said it was the best proposal they'd seen yet. And they were all due today already, so they feel like we're going to get that. It's not official, but I'm very excited about it. So we were happy to see that. Going into our board reports a little bit with the CSIP numbers, there are some things here, I think, that show some massive growth. We're basically holding steady on a lot of stuff, is what I feel like. I went back a little bit in math. We're investigating what that means and how that came about. But one of the things, a couple of things we're really proud of, and you may have already reviewed some of this and know it, but our students do feel a lot better about us at Scott High School. Our Youth Truth results have came up considerably. We're actually, I'm actually on conference calls almost monthly with other schools about what we did and how we changed our student culture at the school. The other thing you'll notice is we had a massive increase in our TEL results. Specifically, our goal was around leadership. We wanted our teachers to feel better about the leadership within the school, and that raised 25 percentage points overall. And I pulled some specific bullets for you there, that our teachers are feeling better about leadership, and they're also becoming part of the leadership structure. Let's see. We'll see on our program reviews, I mentioned already, that we feel very great about those except for we're struggling in PLVS, but our advisory period is moving on that. Our goal at Scott is to become a proficient school. We do think we can make that. We don't know how fast it's going to be, but we feel like we're going to be moving a lot faster here in the next year or two because we know we have some things in place that will be taking hold. For the first time in my tenure at Scott, our staff is pulling in the same direction, and not only pulling in the same direction, but they're doing it on their own. Last year, I would have told you that, you know, that if I had disappeared, that they might just fall down and need a new leader to step in. I honestly think you could take me out of there today, and they would still be pushing and going in the same direction without us. Not to say I'm not needed, but the push is from them now. And that's been my goal all along, is that they really are pushing and wanting to do this. We have three of the initiatives, of the P-21 initiatives at our school, Senior Project, World Studies, and Renaissance Academy. They're all very strong and doing very well. We have implemented the RTIs for English and math at sophomore and freshman level. I expect that's going to be a big impact. We've already seen improvement there. We're implementing a ton of ACT things. I couldn't go into all of them with you today, but I'd be happy to go in with you later. We've done a lot of that. And it is becoming common for our kids to talk about college-ready and actually want to meet that goal. We've also really pushed kids to college classes. I know a lot of times you see AP stats, and I've got these stats in here for you. Our AP numbers have went down somewhat, but if you add college classes with the AP classes, we have a much higher number of kids experiencing one of those two than we've ever had. And this is the smallest senior class we've had in probably 10 years by 40, 50 kids. So we're very happy and proud of that. As a matter of fact, we probably have, we have four teachers right now that are dual certified at our school. We have one more on track to be dual certified next year in math. So we're pretty We have one more on track to be dual-certified next year in math, so we're pretty excited about that. The last thing I want to point your attention to is we do feel like we have made major changes that are coming in the assessment data. The two places that we see that the most right now is in our MAP data and in our recent plan scores. Our MAP data across the board for our freshmen and sophomores has shown more growth than we've seen and growth higher than the average in the nation. Also, we, our current sophomores, which have had the benefit of a lot of the programs we put in, they're showing higher plan scores, which means it's going to be even harder to move them high on ACT, but we're excited about that. They're showing higher scores than we've had in years in most areas as well. I'm very proud of my school. I'm very proud of where we're at. We do not feel that the past two years shows where we're at right now, but we are going to get there, and we're all going to move up, and I think they're going to do that regardless of who even asked them to anymore. In the past, it was us push, push, push. Now, I'm trying to keep up. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us. We appreciate your time and listening. We are very proud of what we've accomplished in the last year at Dixie. Couple of the points of pride here is we continue to be classified as a proficient school, and we are knocking on the door of distinguished. We're very close. We increased our percentile nine points. We're very proud of that. We exceeded our AMO. We had a state goal of .5, and we moved up three points. We increased in four of the five categories, and we're very proud of our entire staff. We do have two in particular who have been publicly recognized. Mr. Chris Gellis, again, he was also a publicly recognized teacher last year. He was chosen to go to the Education Nation Conference in New York. We also have Susan Borchers, who was, who is the Social Studies Teacher of the Year. Last year, we put some great things in place, and the results can be seen in the school report card, starting with reading. We improved our overall score from a 65.4 to 68. We increased our proficient distinguished reading scores by 4.7%. We attribute this to several things, one being the Read 180 classes. Previously, we're just in the freshman year, and last year, we did, we had that also in the sophomore year. So, those students who weren't quite ready to go out into regular classes had a sophomore Read 180 class that they went into. We also, as an administrative team, we increased our PPR walks. And one of the things that we also did is each time we would go into a classroom, we'd make a point to follow up with some type of feedback, emails, conferencing. We put an emphasis on talking with teachers and giving them the feedback that we observed while we were in there. One of the other things that we did, we have a college and career readiness class, and it previously was a six-weeks class, and then they would switch in the middle of the trimester to go to a math. What we did last year is we made it an entire 12-week course. So, and students who needed help in English, but not necessarily math, would not then need to go for that six weeks of math. So, we made that change last year as well. We also increased in our math, our proficient distinguished math score by 5.3%, and we decreased our novice by 6.4. We're very proud of that. One of the, one of the activities that we did that we feel attributed to this is our PLC meetings. At each meeting, the department would analyze student work. We would have one teacher present, here's an assessment that I've done, and the entire department would give feedback on what they felt the students were missing and how they could improve instruction to help the students obtain that skill. We also increased our overall math gap scores and from 3.7 to 6.7. One of the things that we had done there is we added in the equals math and the hands-on math. And that was something that we had a collaborative special ed teacher who was doing this kind of here and there and was finding great success, and then we added it in as a course in addition to the students' math course. So, it was kind of to help get their skills ready for their math course and felt that that was very successful. Our college and career readiness, we moved our overall score from 49.4 to 55.1, and we have, we identified students who didn't meet the benchmark, and they were placed in a CCR class, and the final exam for these classes, for the math class, was the math coyote test. So, the, a lot of that class is just geared on obtaining the skills that they needed. We also streamlined our career pathways, and we had more students taking industry certification tests. We had a lot more students who passed the MOS certification. We also increased our composite score on the ACT from 20.3 to 21. And we, again, last year, each, we divided up the students and their plan results among the administration and our counselors and some CO, and talking specifically with students about what they needed to do to increase their skills and be successful in the ACT. Our graduation rate also increased, as you can see there, from the 83.7 to 91.5, and I agree with what was said before, the monthly meetings that we have at Central Office, we get a lot of great ideas of things that we can do to help our kids from there. We've had a great start to this school year. We've put some things in place that we think will help kids a great deal, and you can see the first couple bullets there is we're increasing the intervention classes. We have the Read 180 and the System 44 classes are year-round, and we've added a transition English class for students who had performed well enough to exit from Read 180 but weren't quite ready to go into the regular English class. We added the transition class. We also include, or expanded our hands-on math and our equals math. It has been doing so well that we've added a freshman-level course for that. Another thing that we've implemented this year that came from site-based discussion is we were talking about how can we get students more college and career-ready? And one of the ideas was to have ACT prep nights for students and to make it fun and have pizza there and there. The students entrance into this night is a completed practice ACT. So, it wouldn't be time-taking to take it, but it would just be, here's the one I missed. And we had teachers there who were ready to say, okay, here's how you do this. It was, it was great, our first one. We didn't have a whole lot of time before. We wanted to do it right before the October ACT, so we had about a week. We had about 10 students show up and probably as many teachers show up. So, it was, it was really, it was good, but we do hope our December one will have even more students because they'll have, we've had students asking, you know, which practice test? So, I think we'll have more students come to that.
Karen, did you say that the idea came from your site-based counseling?
Yes, it did. We've added three AP courses. One of these are for freshmen. The AP government is at the freshman level right now. So far, the students are, they really are up to the challenge. We were concerned about having a freshman AP course, but the students have stepped up and have done very well on their practice AP tests. Our PLCs, last year, we did it by department, the analysis of student work. This year is a, is a next step. One of the, some of the input from the departments were, it was so broad, and I, as a biology teacher, may not know so much about earth science, even though we're all science. So, what we've done this year is they, they meet in content pairs. So, US History meet in two or three and look very specifically at common assessments and assessments rather than the whole department. So, that's been a change and I think a more productive use of the teacher's time. We've had a two-hour data dig by departments where we looked at department data from last year and individual scores, and then spent some time talking about how can we address these, any deficits? How can we move kids who have met benchmark further? And how do we get students who are not at benchmark to benchmark? Our PLC groups, we've examined a lot of our elective courses and looked to see what standards are we hitting in our electives, and are there any other standards that could be hit in those electives and trying to spruce them up? We also have, something we started this year was a claim program, Colonel's Leadership and Individual Mentoring, and this was a voluntary program for students who had, who are off-grade level, should be a junior, but really classified as a freshman because they don't have the credits to be a junior. So, these are our students who are most at risk. These are, according even to our Persistence to Graduate Report, these are the kids we're very concerned about. We sent out an email asking teachers to come and claim kids, and a lot of our teachers did that, have three or four. I have five students that are my claimed kids that I check on monthly and sit down and say, okay, let's look at your credits. Where are you? Where are you in this class? What, what needs to happen for you to pass this class? So, we feel really good about this program and reaching all kids. Based on our data, we've identified two strategies that we must implement. The first one is to increase percentage of students achieving typical growth from the planned ACT from an average percentage of 64.4 to an average percentage of 67.96. We're really hopeful that these ACT nights are going to help us with that. The kids were, were asking for it, so we're hopeful that, that that will help our kids grow in this area. We also, our college and career readiness score, we want to move more kids in achieving benchmark, and one of the ways that we're hoping to do this is expanding our career pathways and our industry certifications. Our business department has spent a lot of time narrowing our focus, and we're hopeful next year to include two more pathways, the foods and the business applications. Our CSIP updates, you'll see from our TEL survey that we greatly improved for the percentage of teachers who feel like they have enough access to technology. Our program review, we didn't, we didn't hit the goal that we were hoping to hit. We are starting to collect evidence earlier this year, and we're hopeful that that will help us move up in that category. Our graduation rate, we're very pleased with how well we did there. And our achievement gap, we didn't quite hit the goal, but we did improve by four, over four points. And our college career-ready, we didn't hit the goal, but, but we did make strides in the right direction. And the last goal there, the achievement gap, we didn't quite hit that goal, but we also improved in that area.
I think you know what you, what you have to do, what things you have to attack.
Yeah.
Keep up, keep up the good ones. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good.
Yeah, we had a little break, a little off.